The swearing in is actually ongoing and it's right at the City Hall Plaza mezzanine level inside, yeah, right at the third floor.
Council, today is March 24th, in accordance with Governor Baker's 2020 Executive Order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law, this Boston City Council will be conducted remotely. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by streaming boston.gov/city-council-tv. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Certainly, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo.
Are we doing roll call or are we doing consent?
Roll call.
Present.
Thank you. Counsel Baker.
Yeah.
Counsel Bach.
Present.
Counsel Braden.
Present.
Counsel Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counsel Asabi George.
Present.
Counsel Flaherty.
Here.
Counsel Flynn.
Here.
Counsel Mahia. Counsel O'Malley.
Present.
Counsel Wu.
Present.
Mr. President, we do have a quorum and I'll keep an eye on full attendance.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're now introducing our clergy. Counsel Baker will introduce our clergy today and after the invocation is delivered, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First, let me just start by saying that Jack O'Hearn is a good friend of myself and my entire family. Thank you for that, Jack. Jack O'Hearn led the tri parish of Holy Family St. Peter's and Blessed Mother Teresa of Calcutta from 2009 until 2016, before he was temporarily reassigned to Randolph. Then he moved back to the city, to St. Patrick's in Roxbury. Father Jack is a well-respected figure in the Archdiocese of Boston and prior to leading the Dorchester tri parishes, Jack held a 15-year assignment in Brookline. He's a proud graduate of St. Margaret's Elementary School and Boston Latin Academy, and he's currently the pastor at St. Gregory's Parish in Lower Mills, a nice Dorchester parish. So, Jack, without further ado, thank you for leading us in prayer today.
The sun rose over this special place, this state of grace, my beloved city this morning. To begin with this noon, we celebrate the historic swearing in of Kim Janey, as mayor of the city of Boston just a short while ago. Today, she makes Boston proud. As the city welcomes our new mayor, we also express our gratitude to her predecessor, Martin Walsh, now Secretary of Labor. We thank him for his selfless service to the city. May God's continued blessing upon him as he advocates for so many left behind, seeking good jobs and good wages, and he who have suffered from the craziness of the pandemic and the craziness of the policies and actions of the former administration. We also, most special way, ask God's blessing of wisdom and strength, patience and peace on our new mayor, Kim Janey. Under her leadership, together with you, her former colleagues in the council, may she be a powerful voice for those left behind in our city. Together, may we strive for and work for a city that is more equitable and fairer for everyone. May God bless also each of you this day with a gift of wisdom and the virtues of humility, compassion and courage as you make your deliberations on that which brings life and energy to Boston. May your thoughtful consideration be for the common good of our city and lift up all people who are blessed to call Boston their home. And finally, may God strengthen each and all of us in His love and enable us, as the prophet Micah proclaims, "Do justice, love kindness, who are humbly with our God." We ask all these things in the name of God, a giver of all good gifts, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Jack, for those inspiring words. Now, I would ask all counselors and viewers who are able to please stand as Counsel Baker leads us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, again, Father Jack and Counsel Baker, for, again, bringing Father Jack into our council family. We will now move on to the approval of the minutes. It's the first order of our business. Is there any discussion on approving and voting on last week's minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the chair moves to approve the minutes last week as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Approval of the minutes, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, the minutes have been approved.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Moving on from communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0452?
Certainly. Docket 0452, message in order to changing the date of the preliminary election for this municipal year from September 21st, 2021, to September 14th, 2021.
Docket 0452 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0453 through 0456 together?
Right. Docket 0453, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $17,421,783 in the form of a grant for the federal FY21 Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG, awarded by the United States Department, to be administered by the Neighborhood Development Department. The grant will fund community and economic development programs. Docket number 0454, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $5,959,142 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Home Investment Partnerships, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund the creation of affordable housing units by non-profits and for-profit developers. Docket number 0455, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $3,248,220 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Housing for Persons with AIDS, known as HOPEWA, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund rental assistance and services for persons with HIV/AIDS. And docket number 0456, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $1,487,124 in the form of a grant from the federal FY21 Emergency Support Grant, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund housing stability and prevention of homelessness.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0453 through 0456 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0457.
Thank you. Docket 0457, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of a net given as an alternate member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for term expiring on May 4th, 2025.
Thank you very much. Docket 0457 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please take the first late matter out of order and read the letter into the record?
Thank you. It's properly before the body.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we please vote to take the first, to add the first late matter to the agenda and then take it out of order? Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. First late file letter from the mayor. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes, and Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu. This matter is properly before the body.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please read the first late file matter into the record?
Thank you. From the office of the mayor, Martin J. Walsh. March 22nd, 2021. Dear Madam Clerk, having been nominated by President Biden and confirmed by the United States Senate to serve as Secretary of Labor, I hereby resign the office of mayor of the city of Boston effective at 9:00 PM on March 22nd, 2021. Serving as mayor for the past seven years has been the honor of my life and a dream come true for a child of immigrants who grew up in our city. When I was first inaugurated, I said I would listen, I would learn, and I would lead together with the people of Boston, and that's what we have done. Together, we created good jobs and affordable homes in every neighborhood, and we made our city safer. We invested in our young people, funding universal high-quality pre-kindergarten, new and fully renovated school buildings across our city, and free community college for low-income students. We led the nation in climate action to protect our city and our planet. We strengthened health and the quality of life in our communities with historic investments in parks, libraries, streets, sidewalks, bike and bus lanes. We created the nation's first Municipal Office of Recovery Services and expanded access to mental health and trauma treatment. We provided permanent housing for over 23 formerly homeless individuals and ended chronic homelessness among veterans. We restored Boston's reputation as a leader in arts and culture. We began to heal old wounds by addressing systemic racism so we can truly be a city where everyone can thrive. We brought together diversity to city employment at every level, and we made community engagement more inclusive and accessible. We modernized services and took care of our finances, putting the city in a strong position to take us even further in the years ahead. In the past year, our strength was tested like never before, and I could not be more proud of how Boston responded to the global COVID-19 pandemic. We set an example for the nation by following the science, putting the safety of our residents first, and working around the clock to help vulnerable residents and small businesses. We showed that our strength as a city is rooted in our compassion and our belief in equity for all people. Over the past several weeks, my team and I have worked closely with Council President Kim Janey and her team on a smooth transition. Bostonians can have confidence there will be no interruption in city service, operations, or services. In my new role as our nation's Secretary of Labor, I will draw deeply on the lessons I have learned in Boston these last seven years and throughout my life in our city. I will be forever grateful to the people of Boston for shaping who I am and granting me the privilege of serving as their mayor. Sincerely, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This matter will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, please update the attendance records to indicate that counselors Mahia and Campbell have joined us. And now, we're moving on to reports of public officers and others, including a communication from Her Honor, the mayor. So, would you please read docket 0458 to the body?
Thank you. Docket 0458, communication was received from City Council President Kim Janey regarding her transition to acting mayor of the city of Boston. Would you now like me to read that letter into the record?
Yes, please, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. The city of Boston, Massachusetts, March 22nd, 2021. Dear colleagues, it has been my pleasure to serve with you as a member of the Boston City Council, and I am honored to have been elected by you as the president of the most diverse city council in Boston's history. Together, we have made progress on the issues that matter most to the people of Boston, from public education, public health, from racial justice to climate justice. Moving forward, I know we will partner together to lead our city through an equitable recovery, safe reopening, and citywide renewal. Together, we will lay the foundation necessary to become the more just, more vibrant, more resilient Boston we dream to be. My transition to mayor of the city of Boston comes at a moment of strength. This is due to the hard work of the residents we serve, as the tremendous efforts of each of you and the tremendous efforts of each of you. I want to thank and congratulate Counselor Matt O'Malley as the new leader of this honorable body. I am looking forward to our work together in every neighborhood of our city. Thank you again for all you do to make Boston great. Sincerely, Kim Janey.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Docket 0458 shall be placed on file. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0459 through dockets 40461?
Docket 0458, communication was received from City Council President Kim Janey regarding her transition, sorry. Docket 0459, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Alice Fish as a member of the Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board. Docket 0460, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Julian M. Mundell as chairperson of the Internal Affairs Oversight Panel. Docket 0461, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Linda Brandon as a trustee of the Make Boston Shine's Trust Fund, for term expiring January 14th, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0459, 0460, and 0461 will be placed on file. We are now moving on to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0198 and 0199 together?
Certainly. Docket 0198, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of John Fernandez as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health, for term expiring January 6, 2024. And docket number 0199, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Dr. Jennifer Charles Rochack as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health, for term expiring January 6, 2024.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Health. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
The orders request confirmation of the reappointment of John Fernandez and Dr. Jennifer Charles Rochack as members of the Boston Public Health Commission Board of Health. Their terms will expire January 6, 2024. The Board of Health is a governing body of the Boston Public Health Commission. Using members, the Board is responsible for adopting, amending, and appealing reasonable health regulations, using members' expertise to inform policy decisions, and the work done by the Boston Public Health Commission. The Board has seven members who serve staggered three-year terms. Six of the members are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by the council. The seventh member is the chief executive officer of the Boston Medical Center and serves ex officio. Of the six members appointed by the mayor, two members must be trustees, officers, or medical directors of neighborhood health centers affiliated with the Boston Medical Center, with one member, and one member must be appointed from a list of not less than three nominees recommended by a nominating committee of representatives of organized labor. Mr. Fernandez currently serves as president of Massachusetts Ionier. Under Mr. Fernandez's leadership since 2007, Mass Ionier has grown from four to 18 patient care sites through greater Boston and Providence, and formed new clinical alliances with neighboring institutions, including Mass General Hospital, Brigham and Women's Hospital, Boston Children's Hospital, Brain Tree Rehab, Jaws &amp; Diabetes Center, and Atrius Health. Dr. Jennifer Charles Rochack serves as president and CEO of Planned Parenthood League of Massachusetts and president of the Planned Parenthood Advocacy Fund of Massachusetts, the first physician to lead these organizations in their histories. Prior to joining Planned Parenthood League of Massachusetts in November of 2015, Dr. Charles Rochack served as the Boston Regional Medical Director for Atrius Health while also caring for patients as a primary care physician. The committee held a public hearing on docket 0198, 0199 on Monday, March 22nd, 2021. Boston Public Health Commission Deputy Director Jerry Thomas testified on behalf of the administration in support of the appointments. Mr. Fernandez and Dr. Charles Rochack testified and answered questions regarding their work and thoughts on various public health matters, increasing public health disparities impacting various communities, addressing underlying causes of public health issues, addressing systemic racism within medical institutions, Black maternal health, language access, and cultural competency in care settings, mental health and wellness, and lessons learned during the pandemic. I'd like to thank counselors Flynn, counselors Bach, Counselor Anissa Asabi George, and Counselor Mahia for their attendance. As Chair of the Committee on Public Health, I recommend moving the listed dockets from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be these appointments ought to be confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. These dockets will be voted on separately. Is there any discussion on docket 0198? Seeing none, Counsel Arroyo seeks passage and confirmation of the first docket, 0198. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0198, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0198 has been confirmed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, moving on to docket 0199, is there any discussion on this docket before the body? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on docket 0199?
Thank you. Docket 0199, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0199 has received unanimous confirmation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you now please read docket 0329?
Thank you. Docket 0329, order for hearing regarding police contracts as policy document.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. We had a great working session yesterday. I really want to thank all the colleagues who came, and let's see if I can do it from memory. I think that was counselors Arroyo, Baker, Edwards, Flynn, Asabi George, this is dangerous, Mahia, and Braden. And we had a really productive discussion about the sort of policy implications of our police contracts, and I appreciated the feedback from colleagues on the memo I had put out about what some of those kind of core commitments that the council might want to make are. Counsel Campbell, I forgot as well, might co-sponsor along with Counselor Edwards on this. So, yeah, it was a productive conversation, and, you know, I think this is something the council is going to continue to work on, and I'd like to kind of implement the comments from colleagues in a next version of that memo, so I'd ask you, Mr. Chair, to leave this item in committee.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Docket 0329 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0166?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Docket 0166, order for hearing regarding the implementation of the BPS-ready reopening plan.
Thank you very much. The chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Counselor Asabi George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had a hearing, actually, yesterday evening, late afternoon, that included the superintendent of schools, a number of members from her team, as well as the Boston Teachers Union, a school nurse, a school teacher, as well as a BPS parent. It was a hearing that lasted about two and a half hours, and grateful for everyone who attended yesterday's hearing, including, now, I'm going to do this from memory, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flaherty, Counsel Braden, Counsel Bach, Counsel Mahia. Thank you all for joining us yesterday, as we learned both about the plans around the fully reopening of our schools, as we know many of our schools, and have already welcomed students back to the classroom in a hybrid model as school does continue remotely. We learned about our, the waiver that was recently submitted to the Department of Secondary Education, Elementary and Secondary Education regarding a request for a later start of return to a fully in-person, five-days-a-week school. That request was put in for a start date of Monday, April 26th, which would be the Monday following April school vacation week. There are certainly some concerns about that return, both about going back to school, but also about the concern of not going back to school. We heard from many parents, both in public testimony and during the course of the hearing, as many of us have also heard from parents across the school district. There is, you know, obviously, we are waiting for the results of that waiver, and in the meantime, the Boston Public Schools has continued to work with the teachers' union to make sure that our classrooms are safe, that our school buildings are safe, and that they have both the infrastructure and the design in place to keep students properly separated and properly safe. There was also a conversation around our school buses and some of the changes and modifications in the policies around safe travel to and from school via our school buses. So, more to come on this. We do hope that this is the last hearing on specifically the reopening of schools. Many questions do remain unanswered around summer school planning, preparing for the next school year in September, and some of the pieces in between. So, I ask that this remain in committee should we need another hearing on this specific topic, although we have some related hearings outstanding and upcoming. Thank you, Madam, Mr. President, sorry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Docket 0166 will remain in the Committee on Education. Moving on now to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0462?
Certainly. Docket 0462, Counselor Edwards offered the following resolution in support of all domestic workers and essential workers in need of immediate COVID-19 vaccine access.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the counselor from East Boston, Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to first note that it is due to my scrimmer's error. I was, I meant to add Counselor Braden as an original co-sponsor, so I wanted to first correct that, and it's due to my, completely my fault. I thought I had communicated that information.
Duly noted, and the agenda and the resolution will be reflected as such with Counsel Braden as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you very much. Now, I want to say I'm so proud of this body. Before I was even a member of this body, I believe it was Counsel Wu who introduced a resolution in support of the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights. Since then, this body has come back to support domestic workers in making sure that they were given their full rights, and all domestic workers are included, including opairs, as we supported a resolution in support of opairs being included under the new law, despite the op-air agencies suing the state and Laura Healey, our attorney general, to make sure that the op-airs were considered students and not workers. So, I'm back again to this body to ask for your support, to support all domestic workers. The matter is, this is the work that makes all work possible, and based off of the census data and the organizing we did almost seven years ago, we found that there was about 60,000 domestic workers in Massachusetts. It is an unseen, undervalued working population that because they go to work, everyone else can go to work. It's the work that makes all work possible, and it's been undervalued because it's predominantly done by women. You know, since the very beginning, we have not recognized domestic workers as the essential workers that they are. The New Deal purposely excluded them and farm workers to make sure that we could get the South to sign on. the South to sign on. We decided that the work that cares for our children, that cares for our elders, that cares for our family members with disabilities, is just not skilled. We have decided it is not hard, and we've decided that it is not worthy of protection, until 2014, actually, in Massachusetts. Now, we are trying to reopen this economy. We are trying our best to make sure that the state is putting all essential workers, who are already on the front lines, and exposing themselves and their family members to risk, or trying to make sure that they get vaccinated. And it was so disappointing in Phase Two to see that while housekeepers were included, so technically, some of the domestic workers, not all the domestic workers were included. As a matter of fact, au pairs and nannies were specifically excluded from care workers. And this is a problem. Because, again, as I stated, it's already a vulnerable population, majority of whom are women, supermajority, I would say, I think it was about eighty, excuse me, 98% of domestic workers were women. And many of them are immigrants, and overwhelmingly women of color. And it's been something that we can correct and recognize, and we, I thought we did with our new law, the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights, that they are essential and worthy of written contracts and protection. I'm only asking that this body support this resolution, to call on the governor to include all domestic workers in Phase Two, and immediately get them in line to get vaccinated, to protect them, so they can go to work, so we can all go back to work. This is a matter of gender equity, and I, of course, wanted this to be introduced on the Gender Pay Gap Day, to make sure that we acknowledge that this is a wrong, and who is being hurt by that wrong. Again, this is the work that makes all work possible. It is, it is hard. It is backbaking work. It is work that is undervalued, and it's work that is essential. We need to do better by our domestic workers in the state of Massachusetts. Getting them vaccinated should be, is the lowest bar. And I'm really disappointed that they are not included in this space. So, I would love for this body to go on record saying all domestic workers are valued, all domestic workers are essential, and all domestic workers need to get vaccinated as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. And are you and Counselor Braden seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution upon further discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Brighton, Counselor Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank my colleague, Counselor Edwards, for including me as a co-sponsor in this important matter. You know, one year ago, we were hailing our domestic workers, our essential workers, as heroes. And their work really made it possible for so many of us to continue working and to be productive and to earn money and keep going, keep things going. But here we are, one year later, and these domestic workers and essential workers, who are predominantly women, and many of them are women of color, predominantly, I would suggest, and they are, and their communities have been disproportionately impacted by the loss of jobs, and their communities have been disproportionately impacted by COVID as well. And here, now, we need to support these, these domestic workers and essential workers so that they can get back to, fully back to work and, you know, can have economic security going forward. And the key piece of that really is to have access to the vaccine. And they should be given a priority, just as they were so essential to us one year ago. It is our turn to stand up for them and make sure that they have equal access and get access to the vaccine as soon as possible. Thank you, and I urge my colleagues to support this resolution.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Is there any further discussion on docket 0462? If so, please indicate by raising your blue hands. Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor to docket 462? Madam Clerk, would you please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Baker, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Bach, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu? Please add the Chair's name. Counselor Arroyo as well. And Counselors Edwards and Braden move for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket
462. Counselor O'Malley, can you add me as well? I'm trying to transfer to my computer.
Apologies, Counselor Campbell, please. Counselor Campbell as well. Any other further? I think we got everybody. Counselors Edwards and Braden are moving for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0462. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0462, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Oh, my God. Yes. I'm trying to transfer to my computer, but thank you.
Is that a yes or no?
That is a yes. Along with, oh, my God.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Savi George?
Yes.
Counselor Savi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Okay.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0462 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselors Edwards and Braden. Excuse me. Now, Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0463?
Certainly. Docket 0463, Counselor Bach offered the following motion to amend the council rules to add a rule number 51 to codify the separation of powers in the event of a mayoral vacancy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, as this is a motion, before we proceed to Counselor Bach, we will need a second. Counselor Edwards has seconded this motion. So, Counselor Bach, please proceed. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Counselor O'Malley. And I want to express my excitement and congratulations for our colleague, Council President Chaney, who's now become the mayor. And this, this proposal before you today is really to amend the rules to reflect a kind of absence in our existing rules. So, as we've all learned over the last couple of months, there's, you know, a number of precedents that were established in the Manino administration about kind of how to handle the context in which our council president is acting as mayor. And so, in order to preserve the important distinction between the executive and legislative branch of the city government, a number of things that would normally be in the council president's purview need to pass over to the president pro tempore, yourself, Mr. Chair. And, you know, just for folks, I think counselors know this, but there's about 20 places in our rules where us, where like, sort of actions on behalf of the council, the council needs to be able to take or delegated to the council president. So, these are things like being able to spot, call special meetings, actually remand 17F. So, when we're demanding information from the mayoral administration, when we're summoning people, there's just a bunch of things that are in the council president's court normally. And obviously, once she's the mayor and is directing all of those departments, can't also be the one who's ordering those things in order to just make sure that we've got the legislative independence. So, I, as people know, am a bit of a rules and procedures person. And the, you know, a lot of these norms that have been established and that are part of how we're going to operate sort of cleanly and clearly in this situation, were not addressed directly in our rules. And I'm a big believer that it makes more sense to take care of kind of these housekeeping things at this moment of transition, before there are any issues, so that we can all, you know, work collaboratively with that, with that clarity, since there are so many, so many substantive issues for us as the council and our new mayor to tackle together in the months ahead. So, as Counselor O'Malley said, this is a motion. It's, so it's something that I could have made from the floor, but because it's a, obviously, you know, a fair bit of text, I wanted to make sure that colleagues had it in advance. So, I, so I filed it in the packets that everybody could give it a read through. And, and so, you know, per our rules, Mr. Chair, you know, what I'm doing is moving to amend the rules, which I understand will take a two-thirds vote, to add this rule 51 to sort of handle the vacancy occasion.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. For further discussion, the Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor. Counselor Mejia? Okay. She may have inadvertently raised her hand. For further discussion, the Chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, I'm objecting to this under Rule 33 on the same day matter, simply because the same day is very clear in what we're allowed to remove from consideration. It's specific in what it cites specifically, it states. It does not apply to reports of committee chairs or personnel orders, not, not motions. But the reason for that, to get to the gist of this, is, the reason I understand that Counselor O'Malley is president pro tempore is Rule 3, which is the presiding officer rule. I'm assuming that is where the authority for Counselor O'Malley to become president pro tempore comes from, without the body voting him in the president role. Is that accurate, Mr. Chair?
I would defer to Counselor Bach, the author of the motion. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
So, I guess I just ask what Counselor, if Counselor Arroyo could finish his point?
It's a question. My assumption is that the reason that Counselor O'Malley is chairing this meeting, the reason Counselor O'Malley is president pro tempore right now, is Rule 3, which is the presiding officer rule. Is that correct?
So, it's, I mean, it's embedded a couple of places. The president pro tempore is referred to, that's the reference to our vice chair, I think, in Rule 3, also in Rule 11. I think there's another place. Yeah. So, a couple of places, but Rule 3 is certainly one of them. Yeah.
So, I would, so here's why I say that. Rule 3, and so people can get to the gist of this, it's not a challenge that Counselor O'Malley is president pro tempore. I think Rule 3 is what creates the precedent for him to be Counselor, President pro tempore. And I agree in terms of the vast majority of what Rule 51 is putting on the table and ensuring that he has the powers of the president. I agree with all of that. It creates, in the language, however, in the, in the event of a vacancy for President pro tempore, and in the case that, for some reason, Counselor O'Malley is unable to continue as President pro tempore, that we would have a new election for a city council president pro tempore. But Rule 3 is very clear in that it says, "In the event of the absence of both the council president and the president pro tempore, the senior member by age shall preside." That's, that couldn't be more clear. And so, in that case, there's, there's essentially an amendment that's, there's essentially language in Rule 51 that would conflict directly with Rule 3, which is how we've put Counselor O'Malley as president pro tempore, and has already foreseen an event in which he may, or in this case, it's him, but where that person could have, whether it's a he or a she, left by that time and place. And it's already created a mechanism by which we shall fill that seat in Rule 3.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. We will continue discussion. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Liz Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've given some thought to this, and I'm trying to get my, my head around the, the question. And I think there, it's important to make a distinction between an absence and the vacancy. And I feel that this motion proposed by Counselor Bach, really, this particular question that we're discussing right now pertains to the issue of a vacancy more than an absence. I know that in my role as the most senior, oldest council member, that I would step in to preside over a council meeting in your absence, Mr. Chair, as president, you would be, you're the president pro tempore. If you were absent, I would, or had to take the floor to present a motion, I would, I would preside over the proceedings for that short time. However, should the president pro tempore vacate the council, for whatever reason, hopefully, you won't have to do that. Vacate the council permanently, then it seems appropriate that we should have some mechanism, some rules to, to, to work with, that, that would, that the body should elect a replacement for the president pro tempore, if it is a permanent, if it is, if it is a vacancy rather than an absence. So, having considered all the pros and cons of this, I stand in support of the motion to amend the rules, as stated by Counselor Bach. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. And to be clear, I'm not planning on going anywhere, but thank you for that feedback, Counselor Bach.
I'm really delighted to hear that. Thank you.
You all are.
You all are.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate also the, the back and forth in this moment. I do think that what we're trying to do, or what Counselor Bach is trying to do, is make sure that there is clarity, that there's consensus, and there's a way to moving forward in this time of transition, so that this body isn't stuck, again, wondering what to do if something is assigned to the Rules Committee, but our city council president, also mayor, is unable to preside over that. So, so, and I, I appreciate that there is a true understanding that all of those things need to be taken care of and outlined. But that is why I do support absolutely this rules amendment, Rule 51, as Counselor Bach has noted. And in terms of, and I really do appreciate Counselor Braden's distinction, we're talking about if Counselor O'Malley or the president pro temp is no longer there, what do we do in that absence? And while I do absolutely think that Rule 3 provides for presiding, it doesn't actually go further into the, who speaks on behalf of the council, who controls committee on the whole, who controls the Rules Committee, who controls all of these different things, signs of death citations, and so on and so forth. So, I actually think the two are complementary. I don't think they're in opposition. And I don't know that I see any, that Rule 33 applies. It seems that on its face, it says, "No ordinance substitution of an ordinance order or resolution may be adopted at the meeting at which is submitted." But I don't know that a motion is applicable under Rule 33. So, I actually think we're within our jurisdiction to have this discussion, within our jurisdiction to vote on this motion, and I fully support the, the rule proposed by Counselor Bach.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor, I don't know if you heard what's up from earlier. Do you have further comments?
I have further comments. In terms of, and I, and I'm grateful to Counselor Braden and Counselor Edwards for, for their, their input on this. But in terms of where we're at here, I just want to be clear. Rule 3 is why you are president pro tempore. It's not about whether or not she leaves for the meeting for the day. There's nothing in these rules that exists that make you president pro tempore, unless we take Rule 3 and use that to say that is why you're president pro tempore. If we're then saying that those same rules that make you president pro tempore right now do not actually say that the senior member by age shall preside in your absence, then in terms of a vacancy, there's nothing here that says, "In the case of a vacancy, the vice chair becomes pro tempore." It's presiding officer Rule 3. If we're saying that this wouldn't apply to, say, the eldest member, in this, in the event that you're not able to do it as vice chair, then we're also saying that, in that case, it doesn't really apply here either, that it doesn't actually give you the authority to be president pro tempore right now. I don't know how we can say Rule 3 is clear in the vacancy that exists now, even though it says absence, to be clear. But it would create a situation in the case of you being absent, even though it says it specifically by word, that the oldest member, that doesn't matter anymore, that doesn't count, we can't use that together. I don't see how we, it's literally in the rules. As far as Rule 33 goes, I understand that it says, "Adoption on matters of days introduced," and it says, "No ordinance substitution ordinance." But laws are very clear, when they actually make exceptions, when they say what the exceptions are, they mean specifically just those exceptions. And it says specifically that this rule may only be suspended with unanimous consent. This rule applies only to matters not previously filed for council consideration, assigned to committees, and any related amendments or substitutions. And here's where it's clear, and does not apply to reports of committee chairs or personnel orders. orders. It does not say, and does not apply to reports of committee chairs, personnel orders, or motions. And so, because it's that clear in terms of what it specifically delineates it does not apply to, this is not something that it would specifically delineate it does not apply to. I would object to this going forward today, because I think that this requires consensus. Right now, we are not at consensus, to be clear, I would object to that language. And I want to be clear further, I'm not objecting to the idea that you are President Pro Tempore. I am gathering that from Rule 3. I'm also saying that that same rule says what happens for your successor. And if we're going to create a new rule that says, "No, no, no, there's a different rule for the successor," while still having a conflicting rule on the books, that's, that's a big problem for me. And so either we can delete that portion and do an amended version, where we give you all the powers of the acting president, which I would support, and then we, we have a separate conversation about the vacancy and whether what we want to amend Rule 3, or what we want to do after that. That's different. But if we're saying we have to force this through today, I would object on Rule 33, and I would say that this requires a hearing to ensure that we're not creating a rule that, in my opinion, directly conflicts with Rule 3, and which is the reason why you are right now serving as President Pro Tempore.
Chair now recognizes Counselor Kenzie Bach. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. A couple of points. So one thing is, it's actually, it's quite important that motions are not referred to in those rules, so, you know, we operate on Robert's Rules of Order, I've got my handy copy here. If a motion were not allowable, except by unanimous consent on the day of the meeting, like, all motions, like, motions to lay things on the table, motions to amend things, motions to do, like, anything, would all require unanimous consent, it would actually completely break down parliamentary procedure. So it's quite important that motions are different in kind, and that, you know, that's something where Robert's Rules holds, and where they are not being spoken to. And so when you talk about the exceptions there, Counselor Arroyo, that are listed in the order, not in the order, in the rules, those are specifically exceptions within the categories listed by the rules, which are orders, ordinances, substitutions for ordinances, and resolutions. So it's saying, oh, there are things in these categories, like personnel orders, that this doesn't apply to. But there, it's, it absolutely could not refer to motions. If it did refer to motions, the whole kind of, like, parliamentary procedure apparatus would grind to a halt. So I feel very strongly about that point on Rule 33. I think, you know, to the, to the question of kind of how to move forward, I think, I mean, the key thing I want to stress is that, you know, we're already two days into the new acting mayor administration, and I think that, and, and, you know, and I really think that, that it's amazing, it's, it's a historic moment, I think we see the council president stepping up into her power as mayor and, and taking that executive role. And I think it's urgent for this body to also establish sort of its clarity and legislative independence clearly in the rules ASAP, like, and so, to me, that's a really pressing issue, the, and, and is the reason I would oppose any effort to delay this question. I think it's, it really is a question of, of clarity and of codifying, frankly, what are the norms anyways. I think that, you know, obviously, the council could have further conversation about this point. There's nothing that stops us from coming back a week from now and, and amending the rules and saying, hey, you know, actually, on reflection, we think we should do this differently. But I want to be clear about the contradiction issue. It's not that, it's that the Rule 51 is creating a situation in which, or it's, it's describing a situation in which it is going to supersede. So for instance, right, it's only in the case of mayoral vacancy that the President Pro Tempore gets all these powers, otherwise, they would be sitting with the council president. So it's also only in this case that we're saying, oh, the President Pro Tempore would be elected, right? And so I think that's where, it's not that the two things are in conflict, it's that Rule 3 is describing the sort of normal thing, like Liz said, if someone, if there's an absence, and then Rule 51 is sort of calling out this whole kind of special situation we're in and saying, here's what goes down in that instance. And because we're making those transfers, you know, of power, I think there's a heightened reason to think that, you know, in the vacancy instance, that we would, that we would have an election. But, but I think, you know, even if we were gonna go back and forth on that, I, I, I think that it's really important for us to get this, like, overall clarity today, and make sure that it's codified in our rules. And I, and I also just think it's important, like, a body can, it's important to note, a body can have a rule, and then it can have another rule that says, oh, but in this case, this is what happens. Like, that's just part of, that's, that can be part of rule structure, and frankly, like, you know, it's one of the oldest facts about legislative bodies that we get to make our own rules. It's, I mean, it's the whole reason we're having all these fights about what the Senate rules are, and none of them are in the Constitution, because that's just, the body has to make it up. And, and I think that's a really important prerogative of this body, and I think that passing this today will, will help kind of codify and protect that. So, you know, so I would, I would continue respectfully to ask that we do vote on this today. Obviously, if Counselor Arroyo wanted to propose an amendment, that, there's parliamentary procedure for that, and a vote, right? And then I think also that there's nothing that would stop us from amending the rules again next week, or whenever, if, if, if a different sort of consensus on this point emerged. But I would really, I would really be strongly against postponing dealing with the kind of critical issue, because I think we're in this moment of transition this week, and now is the appropriate time. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. So I will get to you, Counselor Mejia. We called on you at the beginning, but I think maybe there was some connectivity issues. But before I turn it over to you, I just want some clarity on Rule 33. This is a parliamentary inquiry. Madam Clerk, the question before our body as a parliamentary inquiry is whether or not a motion requires unanimous consent to be acted on upon the day that it is introduced. What is your interpretation of that question?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would concur with Counselor Bach, Counselor Edwards also, for their very valid points that are being raised. When the law is silent, it's silent, and it's very clear what cannot be voted on without suspension. And a motion, as, as Counselor Bach, as she began her presentation, stated, she could have made this as a motion. We have seen over the years many changes to the rules. Generally, they, you know, it might be at the beginning of the year, but in, in my tenure in this building, I would say there have been several opportunities where there have been rules changes. But when I saw what was being brought forth, I was delighted to have that clarity. I can tell you the number of calls and queries that are coming our way, because this helps us clarify what are, what are our procedures going forward. And I would strongly urge, if it's not inappropriate, that we really embrace this additional rule, because I do think it'll bring clarity. This may never happen in our lifetime again, but it has happened twice in my lifetime, so I think this clarity will go a long way. And I would concur that Rule 33, a motion laid on the floor, you could call for any motion, and once it's before the body, you cannot object to a motion.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to end discussion, but I did say, Counselor Mejia, you have not yet weighed in, so Counselor Mejia, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I, I think in the spirit of creating space for people to really get a full understanding of what this means, I mean, we're talking about one more, a few, a few more days, maybe we could host a hearing, so that we can get a little bit more clarity around what this all looks like. Just because I think when it comes to rules, there could be some unintended consequences to some of those rules, and I think I would benefit from having a better understanding of what this all means. So I would have to say that I am in support of Counselor Arroyo and, and taking a moment to pause and not voting on this today.
Okay. Counselor Bach, I will give you the final word on this before we vote, if you want to react to that, add one more thing after or before. Counselor Arroyo briefly, and then Counselor Bach will close it out before the vote.
If we're really seeking consensus, and again, I think the issue here with this, for me, is that if we're saying that Rule 3 doesn't address the vacancy in the case that you're gone, then we don't have, there's no reason to say that we shouldn't vote for President Pro Tempore right now. There's literally none, that, that this doesn't make sense under these rules, that Counselor O'Malley would be President Pro Tempore, if we're saying that these same rules don't have a clear delineation for who comes in after him. That's my issue with it. We're literally saying Counselor O'Malley is President Pro Tempore, but the thing where it says who takes the power after him, that part isn't clear. I don't, so, I don't see how that would be true. And so I have an issue with that. And so my question would be, Counselor Bach has offered it, will you accept as a friendly amendment the elimination of that one line, dealing with what occurs in the event of a vacancy in President Pro Tempore? And then we can have that as a secondary thing, even next week, if we have to have a conversation about it then. But I could agree to giving Counselor O'Malley the powers of an acting president. It's that one line in terms of the vacancy, and the reason I am so insistent on this is the only reason that I can come to for President O'Malley Pro Tempore is Rule 3. And if we're saying that that rule doesn't actually do that, then I don't know what actually justifies President Pro Tempore O'Malley. There's nothing in this, in these rules that says we shouldn't just vote for that. And so, in that sense, I think it creates a really, a problem with accepting President Pro Tempore power for, for Counselor O'Malley. I would like to avoid that problem by just saying that if Rule 3 gives him his power and clearly delineates what happens if he leaves, that we just follow Rule 3. I don't know why we're dealing with, saying that it's unclear what happens when Rule 3 is the whole reason that he is council president Pro Tempore. So why would we say it's clear to him, but unclear to what happens if he leaves? That makes no sense, none. It's not a question about giving him acting presidential powers, he should have those. I support that wholeheartedly. I think we all consensously do. It's just saying that if what's made him the president is Rule 3, and it clearly delineates what happens if he leaves, and we say that's not valid, then what makes the first part valid that makes him President Pro Tempore? And there's nothing in these rules that does that. There's nowhere in the rules that does that, except for Rule 3. And so, why could we say half of Rule 3 works for us, but the other half doesn't? That makes no sense, not when it's so clear. And so what I am asking is a friendly amendment, where we eliminate the language regarding what happens in the event of his vacancy, because that language is already addressed in Rule 3. Everything else, in terms of what the clerk has mentioned about the powers of, of President Pro Tempore, all of that can remain. I'm just asking for a friendly amendment to remove the line that, that describes what a new election that happens after he leaves.
Counselor, all right, we, Counselor Bach, there is a, there has been an articulated friendly amendment to your motion. Do you accept it as friendly?
So I, I don't, I think we should, I think that Counselor Arroyo should make that motion, and we should vote on it, because I know that there, I think there's a variety of opinion. I, I think the problem, the problem that I have, Counselor Arroyo, with that is that, well, there's a couple of things. I mean, I think Counselor Braden and others have articulated reasons why, you know, I think there's some, there's some substantive sort of common sense back and forth here about what makes sense in this instance, if, if Matt were to go, which, again, hopefully this entire debate is about something that is never gonna happen. But, but, but the reason I wouldn't want us to be silent on it is because the, actually, the whole reason that I put that in originally is because I wanted to be super clear from a rules perspective, that if the President Pro Tempore were to be vacant, we would replace that, but us having a vote on that would not be us having a vote on the council presidency, right? Because the council presidency stays with Mayor Janey. And so my concern is that you could get a weird confusion if the council were to, if, if, if the, if the rules are silent on that, and we ended up in that situation, you could get some weird confusion about kind of 17F and what kind of an election you're having. So that was actually the clarity I was trying to give on that. And I guess my instinct is that if the body is persuaded to, to switch to your argument, that that's something that we could amend next week or whenever, but having something in there means that we're not gonna hit that confusion. So that's sort of where my headspace is on it. I do think also it's important to note that Counselor O'Malley is, is, he's in his power not just by virtue of Rule 3, I think, but sort of by virtue of being the vice chair of the committee of the whole, which is, in some ways, another fancy way of saying us, the council. And so that's like an office that he inhabits. So I actually, I don't think I would say that Rule 3 is the only mechanism there. But I guess, so I guess the point is, like, you know, I think probably we should, if you want to make that amendment, which, as, as I hear you describing it, would be to strike, strike the last line of the first paragraph.
I've, I've actually sent the language, the entire amendment, it's in Maureen Feeney, Clark Feeney, and Michelle Goldberg's inbox, because it, I feel like it should be before the body to see the amendment language.
All right, all right, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Arroyo.
So that, it would need a second, Mr. Chair, I guess, would be the point.
Exactly. So.
I second it.
Well, I haven't called for the second yet, so, so stand by. I, I want to be clear, parliamentary, this is what is happening. There is a motion that was offered by Counselor Bach and seconded by Counselor Edwards, that is before the body. We will vote on this motion today. It's the interpretation of the clerk that Rule 33 does not apply, so we simply need two-thirds, a majority or two-thirds of the council, two-thirds of the council to rat by the motion that's been offered by Counselor Bach and seconded by Counselor Edwards. Any counselor can, of course, offer another rule change at this or subsequent council meetings. Sounds as though Counselor Arroyo has something that he is circulating. We will vote on that separately.
All right, no, just to be clear, Matt, it's an actual amendment to this motion, this rule change. It's, it's an amendment, I'm asking that we vote on it as an amendment to this language.
In a second. Before we call on the vote, because several other counselors wish to speak, can we disseminate that? Madam Clerk and, and central staff, is that, have you received that language from Counselor Arroyo?
Yes, I have just sent it to counselors' inboxes.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney Goldberg. I would encourage you all to take this time to review the language. We will continue discussion on this. Counselor Flaherty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I guess the first question I have is, I wanted to move on the first motion, so you just cleared that up. I want to make sure that we're voting on the first amendment, the amendment first, and then to a couple of points that were made. When the council rules don't speak to something, we automatically revert to Robert's Rules of Order. That's how it's been since I've been here as the longest-serving member. And so if there's rule changes, they may be worth a consideration to, to the amendments and take the amendments one at a time.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. I am now going to, Michelle Goldberg has sent us all the language. We are now, this is, I'm sorry, Counselor Bach.
I'm so sorry, it's just the version that I have doesn't reflect a change.
Okay.
So, Michelle, is that the right version, or Counselor Arroyo? I just, I downloaded it, and it doesn't reflect the change that I was expecting it to.
Where, where, so I'm looking at the one that I have, and so the change should be that it ends at, "The council president, who is performing the duties of the acting mayor, shall obtain the physical office, as ordered with the office of the council president. The aspects of the vacancy come after that, and that's been deleted."
No, but that's the wrong, that's the wrong vacancy part.
Right.
That's, it's the, that you're talking about the vacancy issue at the bottom of the first paragraph, not the bottom of the second. Because that, that's, that issue is about the, is about if the council president worded a part. This is about if Matt worded a part.
I'm sorry, now with the council president, council president thing, throw it off. The first, the first paragraph, as I'm reading it right now, relates to the powers as they would relate to Counselor Matt O'Malley right now as President Pro Tempore.
Right, so I think your amendment is that you want it to cut off at the end of, after the whole, like, you want to delete the, in the event that a vacancy should occur in the office of President Pro Tempore, right?
Yeah.
Right, so maybe, could we just update that?
Where do you see that? I'm not looking at it right now, I'm trying to, so that we can do this quicker.
So it's at the, it's, it's at the bottom of the first paragraph. You want to delete the last sentence of the first paragraph.
Okay, should I put a new?
Yeah, you should do a new one, because you should undelete the last sentence of the second paragraph.
Okay, so give me one second. One second while I do this.
Counselor Edwards, did you, I don't know if your hand was raised from earlier, did you have some further discussion while Counselor Arroyo sends his amendment?
Thank you very much. I, I think you clarified, one, that we will be voting on this amendment, and two, that we're having a vote, or once we get the amended language, that it'll be on whether to delete this or not. And then afterwards, we'll have the, the vote on the, whatever's left, on the formal. First vote will be to whether we amend this. Second vote will be over the overall thought, the thing to be, to the overall rule that's left.
That is correct. The first vote will be on this amended language that Counselor Arroyo, through central staff, is having decimated, or disseminated through, to the individual inboxes. That has been seconded by Counselor Mejia. It has not been accepted as a friendly amendment to Counselor Bach's motion that has been seconded by Counselor Edwards. So should the Counselor Arroyo amendment pass, that is the motion amended that we will be voting on after. That is the, uh, motion amended that we will be voting on after. Should the Counselor Arroyo amendment not pass, we will be voting on the motion that Counselor Bach, uh, presented out of an abundance of transparency she publicly noticed and gave us two days ago. Um, also, she was required to.
And, and just, uh, uh, just to not have to do this multiple times, uh, if I may ask for you, the Chair, to Counselor Bach specifically, what sentence in paragraph one before I hit send on this to, to Clark Feeney?
So.
So, uh, you.
Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Sorry, you mean which sentence you're cutting?
Yeah, I, I don't see, in the first sentence, I'm not actually seeing where, what, where the difference is. The only thing I'm trying to address, to be clear, is the language that deals with the vacancy in the event that the President Pro Tempore leaves. As far as I know, that's what is in the draft before you that I, that was eliminated in the final paragraph.
No, so it's not in the final paragraph. That's about the Council President who remains, our Acting Mayor Janey, right? So the, the, the sentence you're looking for is the last sentence of the first paragraph. It says, "In the event that a vacancy should occur in the Office of President Pro Tempore, the council shall occupy simple majority and other member." Do you see that sentence?
Yes, there it is.
So that's.
You know, I would urge the, the author of this amendment to perhaps not offer an amendment today. He, of course, has the opportunity to offer an amendment in subsequent weeks, uh, but just given the fact that there seems to be such, uh, a lack of clarity on, on what, what amendments you're making, perhaps it makes sense to allow the vote to occur today and then further revisions are, of course.
I appreciate that, but, uh, the amended motion that I've just sent has now been sent again.
Great. And, um.
Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I was just, I just wanted to say, just, um, for folks, for folks watching at home who might be confused. Just that, um, to be clear, the, the Vice Chair of our Committee on the Whole was set by the Council President, who is now our mayor, right? Kim Janey. That was set way back in January 2020. That's part of committee assignments, including that, is, is a part of the, um, you know, rules and committee assignments package that comes at the beginning of a term. So just to be clear, this motion today is not about, um, making the Chair the President Pro Tempore that he already is. It's just about codifying, um, the, you know, the powers of the council, um, to direct its own business through him, um, in a situation like this where we've had our, our leader go over to the executive side of the House and then we're still the legislative side of the House. So I just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
Got it.
Thank you. Now, I, I'm, Counsel Arroyo, I have to, I have to run the meeting. We are moving on. There's an amendment before the body that has been seconded by Counselor Mahia. Um, and Madam Clerk, uh, all counselors should have received this in their inbox. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the Arroyo amend, uh, Arroyo amendment?
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo, and this is on docket number of zero four six three as amended by Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
No.
Counsel Baker, no. Counsel Bach.
No.
Counsel Bach, no. Counsel Braden.
Um, no.
Counsel Braden, no. Counsel Campbell.
No.
Counsel Campbell, no. Counselor Edwards.
No.
Counselor Edwards, no. Counsel Asabi George.
No.
Counsel Asabi George, no. Counsel Flaherty.
No.
Counsel Flaherty, no. Counsel Flynn.
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
No.
Counsel O'Malley, no. And Counsel Wu.
No.
Counsel Wu, no. Um, Mr. President, uh, Counsel Arroyo's amendment on docket zero four six three has failed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There is now a motion before the body from Counselor Bach and seconded by Counselor Edwards. Uh, Counselor Bach moves, uh, the, the, the motion is currently before the body. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket zero four six three. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Ed, Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number zero four six three has passed unanimously.
Thank you, the motion passes. Congratulations, Counsel Bach. We're now moving on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket zero four six four?
Certainly. Docket zero four six four, Counsel O'Malley for Counsel Braden.
Uh, excuse me, Counselor, the Chair moves suspension of the rules and packet, passage of docket zero four six four. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Counsel, docket zero four six four, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yeah.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number zero four six four has been passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please read and place before the body docket four six five.
Thank you. Docket zero four six five, Counsel O'Malley for Counsel Braden.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket zero four six five. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly. Counsel, docket zero four six five, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number zero four six five has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to docket four six six.
Docket zero four six six, Counsel O'Malley.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket zero four six six. Madam Clerk, Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Great save, Mr. President. Um, docket zero four six six, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number zero four six six has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there is another late file matter. Uh, the second matter is a hearing order sponsored, sponsored by counselors Flynn and Bach. Uh, the late file matter is being sent to everyone right now, so check your inboxes. Um, and as you reflect on the late file hearing order, we will take a roll call vote to add this item to the agenda. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. Late file ma, late file matter, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Sorry, yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Uh, the late file matter is properly before the body.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please read the late file matter into the record?
Certainly. Uh, would you like me to read first and last two?
First and la, first and last would be fun.
Thank you. Offered by counselors Ed Flynn and Kenzie Bach in the City Council, an order for hearing regarding Brookfield Asset Management firing of fifty-two workers at the Nine Zero Hotel. Whereas Brookfield Asset Management owns the Nine Zero Hotel located at Ninety Tremont Street in Boston, and whereas COVID-19 should not be used as, as an excuse to wipe away first generational wealth from Black, Brown, and Asian families, now is therefore ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing on the unraveling situation at the Nine Zero potential implication Brookfield's decision have on the Boston Retirement Fund beneficiaries. It is further order, ordered that pursuant to Chapter Two Thirty-Three, Section Eight of the General Laws and Section Seventeen I of the Boston City Charter, the Boston City Council summons the appropriate res, excuse me, representatives from the Brookfield Asset Management to attend and testify, testify, filed on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Chair recognizes the District Counsel from South Boston. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to apologize first to my colleagues and the clerk for this late file, uh, but we believe this is a pretty urgent matter since the firing just happened this Monday. I want to thank Counsel Bach for partnering with me on this hearing order and to support our workers at Nine Zero Hotel. Nine Zero Hotel is located in the downtown area. It is owned by Brookfield Asset Management. And on Monday, it notified the Nine Zero workers through Unite Local Twenty-Sixth that it plans on permanently eliminating an estimated fifty-two employees. That is fifty-two union workers out of seventy-seven workers. I was with them when they got that notice. And the pain and the suffering and the heartache that these families experienced is something, um, that was awful to see. It is unconscionable. It is outrageous to use the pandemic as an excuse to lay off these hard-working hotel employees. What makes this even worse is that this termination comes only days after a contract, contract provision running out that guaranteed the right for workers to return with full seniority. This is not the first time that a hotel layoffs, lays off their workers and uses their pandemic as an excuse for such terrible action. These good hospitality jobs arrived with fair wages and good benefits for many Black, Brown, and Asian Boston hotel workers, including immigrants and women. And we should do all that we can to preserve them. I will stand with these workers, and I know my colleagues in the Boston City Council have as well. We have picketed with these workers. We know these workers and how hard they work. We respect them. We admire them. And if necessary, I will get arrested with them as we peacefully picket. Don't try to make it an even larger profit margin on the backs of the working men and women of this city. The Boston Retirement Fund has fourteen million invested in the Brookfield Asset Management Fund that owns the Nine Zero Hotel. With these firings, we are calling for a public hearing to learn more about the potential implications Brookfield's decisions have for the Boston Retirement Fund beneficiaries. And I expect, um, at this hearing to have the CEO of Brookfield Asset Management appear before the Boston City Council and explain himself. I don't want a public relations, uh, flack to represent him or her. I want him sitting down and explaining why he's firing African-Americans, why he's firing Latinx and Asians in the middle of a pandemic while he has billions of dollars profit in his company. It is also important that we continue to support these workers and allow, not allow these companies with huge profits to use this pandemic to lay off hard-working employees who rely on their jobs to support their families and put them on a path to the middle class. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Flynn. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And I'm proud today to stand alongside Counsel Flynn in support of the workers of the Nine Zero Hotel and Boston's, uh, Unite Here Locals Twenty-Sixth Union. You know, he and I were both at hotels in our district last week to advocate for hotel workers and their families. Um, and we previously stood in strong support, and this council, um, has passed resolutions in support of the right to recall. Um, you know, I think that what's so critical for folks to understand is that this isn't, this isn't just a question of people getting laid off, right? In, or for, furloughed in the context of the pandemic. Many of our hotels, yes, have seen their vacancy rates drop and they've had to furlough folks. But the question is, when you start coming back, when the economy begins to recover, do those workers get their jobs back? And do they get the seniority and the benefits that they have negotiated that are part of what support their family? Or do, you know, our for-profit companies take advantage of this moment to get rid of long-term loyal workers and hire people, frankly, at worse pay and benefits and without the seniority and worse work conditions? And that's something that I think we just have to stand incontrovertibly against. Many of our hotels in this city have guaranteed the right to recall, but as we're hearing, you know, the 90 instead has not made that commitment and instead has chosen to terminate these hardworking folks just days after a contract provision expiring that would have, you know, again reaffirmed that right for them to return with full seniority. We know that these good-paying hotel jobs are the basis of intergenerational wealth for many Black, Brown, and Asian Bostonians, many immigrants, many women. I've got folks in my district who are, you know, who have managed to build a stable life in the city on these jobs, and that's exactly the kind of jobs we want to have. And there is no real recovery from COVID-19 without that recovery extending to these workers. And I think as a council, we're going to have lots of opportunities to think about, you know, economic support and recovery and the federal money that's coming in and all of that. But we need our private partners to do their part to say, okay, as I get to bring my workforce back, I will bring these workers who have been loyal to us back. And I just want to underscore finally that, you know, I think some of our other colleagues have brought forth hearing orders about the possibility of committing ourselves as a body, as a city, having our finances reflect our values in terms of like not investing in fossil fuels and things like that. I think this is a really concrete case where the Boston Retirement Fund is invested in Brookfield Asset Management, and it's not treating workers the way that we want them to be treated. And so I think we have a place where our fiduciary interest and our values interest, you know, need to talk to each other. And that's why I'm really eager for Brookfield Asset Management to come and meet with us and address this firing. So, and hopeful that it will be reversed before we even have to do that, but looking forward to the occasion to hold them to account. So, thank you, and thank you, Counsel Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. The chair now recognizes the district council from East Boston. Counsel Edwards, the floor is yours. You are muted, Counsel Edwards.
Thank you. I just want to say I wholeheartedly support this. I wanted to say, Counsel Flynn, you know, I followed you in the Southie Parade for St. Patrick's Day. I followed you all the way out to Worcester for nurses at St. Vincent's. And so it looks like I'll be following you to jail. And so, and I'll be with you. But luckily, luckily, one of our colleagues is a criminal defense attorney. I'm looking at you, Counsel Arroyo, and maybe he'll get us out. Maybe, who knows? But anyway, the fact of the matter is, I think we probably as a body stand united and firm in our conviction that not only what Counsel Bach said, our money needs to go where our values are, but also that the fact that any corporate entity that has the money to pay their workers and pay them well would think at this time it's okay to fire people who have dedicated their lives and put their work out there and as essential workers essentially put their health at risk to help this corporate entity exist, that they would even be subject to something such as a firing or even questioning their loyalty or even questioning, you know, making them question how they're going to pay their rent is disgusting. And I find I'm so excited to not only support this, I'm so excited it is a hearing order, and I hope that it comes eventually with a subpoena as well, because I think sometimes you're going to have to force people to come sit down and have a good conversation. But thank you so much. I want to say also, my friends and I agree. I got several text messages, Counsel Flynn. That was by far one of the best speeches I have ever heard you say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards, and I concur. Love to hear the passion, Counsel Flynn. Well said. Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counsel Mahia, the floor is yours.
Yes, I was getting worried there for a second. Flynn was all in. I'm loving every minute of it. This is what it looks like. But yes, please add my name. Would love to support this. I did receive a call from a hotel worker, actually this weekend. It wasn't in particular to this case, but he did mention to me that alongside with losing his job, he had worked in this particular hotel for 20-something years, and his severance package was like very small. Like they didn't even give him the amount of financial support to coincide with the length of time that he had been in service. And so I think as we're thinking about this hearing order and the people that we bring in, I would love to figure out how we can also talk about the fact that when people do let go of, that we're not really thinking about these severance packages and how sometimes they're unjust in that way as well. So, kudos to Flynn and Counsel Bach for going so hard for our people. And please sign my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Edwards as a cosponsor. Please add Counselor Mahia as a cosponsor. We'll get to the others in a second. I just neglected to add those two names. Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from South Boston. Counsel Flaherty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name, obviously, and thanks and commend the sponsors. Our hotel workers do great work. Obviously, Local 26 Unite Here is a great partner in our city. And also, we know the obvious that our hotel industry and our restaurants have really taken a beating over the past year with COVID. So as things start to open back up again, completely disheartening to see and hear what some of these hotels are doing or have done. Many of them, I would argue, probably collected the PPP funds but didn't retain their staff. So, we ought to look into all of that. And we may want to consider a friendly amendment next week called the Flynn Amendment. No flacks in the chamber. Please add my name, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flaherty, and I think that amendment would sail through. So, thank you for, I look forward to that proposal formalized before the body. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker's name. Please add Counselor Braden's name. Please add Counselor Campbell's name. Please add Counselor Wu's name. Please add Counselor Asabi George's name. Please add Counselor Arroyo's name. Please add the chair's name. And this late file matter will be assigned to the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. Moving right along to the green sheets, would anybody wish to remove a matter from the green sheets? You may do so at this time. Counsel Flaherty, your hand is up, but I assume that is from the earlier item on the agenda?
That is correct. That is correct.
Great. Seeing no takers, the green sheet shall remain as such. We're now moving on to the consent agenda, and I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. Chair now moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. For the consent agenda, Counselora Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselora Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell?
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George?
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia?
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, the consent agenda has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to announcements. Do any counselors wish to offer any words of wisdom? Seeing, oh, yes, a couple of hands going up. The chair now recognizes the district council from Mattapan. Counsel Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley, and great job in your first meeting, and congratulations again. I actually just wanted to lift up a very painful loss, frankly. Was at a funeral this morning. That's why I was late. The recent senseless shooting in Charlestown left a young man named Jawad Mohammed, who was only 33 years old, dead. And his family lives in my district. He lived in my district in Dorchester. His parents live in Mattapan. They are active in the Muslim community. They are active in the district. His father in particular is very close to my stepdad, my uncle, who is my father. They are both musicians in the community. Berklee College of Music came through that institution together, traveled the world, bringing incredible jazz music internationally, and they're widely known. So this was definitely a shocker. The service, it was outside. It was completely packed. There were a lot of city employees there as well, many of our street workers and folks who continue to show up. You know, the other public health crisis we're dealing with in the city of Boston is not just, of course, COVID-19 and the opioid crisis. It's also violence and senseless violence in the city of Boston. So I wanted to lift up his name because I thought it was very important and because I know a lot of folks in the city of Boston right now are hurting, and a lot of young people are hurting. There was actually sadly a confrontation at the service today. It was quickly resolved in many ways, but it really speaks to the pain that is in community, especially in communities of color, especially in the Black community, and how important it is that we address our trauma and we get healing and mental health supports and deal with our grieving in a adequate way. And it takes everyone a different amount of time to do that, but if we don't, we will continue to hurt each other. And that showed up today sadly at the service, but it was also a beautiful space as well. So I just wanted to lift up Jawad's name. And I wanted to quickly say something from his, the tributes that were written today and his obituary as well. It said he was "a man who was unafraid to be himself in any arena. His smile was contagious. He always knew how to make you smile. He was courageous, and he did not have any cowardice in his spirit. He was a protector to many and a supporter to all. He often encouraged others to follow their dreams and to stay on the right path. And if you needed anything, he was always there." And I think that is the very spirit that actually unfortunately got him killed. And so please continue to lift up his family and just wanted to say that this is devastating, not just me and my team as well, because his father in particular, Ron Mahdi, showed up in numerous spaces, including did a senior concert when we lost a senior on Franklin Field. Did a senior concert that we put together to honor folks in our community. He did our Mattapan Jazz and Unity Festival. He has continually showed up to demonstrate and give his art to our community. So I know they will be grieving for some time. So just wanted to lift all of them up. I'll continue to keep them in my prayers, but thank you, Council President, for allowing me to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, before I say some more, what I was intending to say, just wanted to just double piggyback on Counselor Campbell's call for more trauma response support services. I think that oftentimes, especially in our community, we move on as business as usual when it comes to violence. You know, everybody knows that we're all here dodging these same bullets. When we go to the supermarket, when we go to the bodega, when we go to the hair salon, we're always looking both ways before we walk out because we're afraid that we might be caught in that crossfire. And I think that if we're not addressing trauma at the core of the violence conversation, then we're missing out. And I think it's really important for us, regardless of what district and constituents we represent, that we have to come to terms with the fact that there's 700,000 residents in the city of Boston, and we're all impacted by the violence that happens in this city, right? So I think that we all have to lean into this conversation and do whatever it takes to support the social and emotional well-being of those who have survived violence, those who have witnessed it, and those who continue to live in fear because of it. So I thank you, Counsel Campbell, for uplifting that piece. At the same time, I also just want to, like, from today's observation in this transition, and what I'm hoping for, right, is that I know you all know I always got something to say, and I always like got my head shot popping all over the place. And, you know, I come, I call people in or I call them out, right? I think it's really important because the way the politics of the city of Boston are unfolding, I think it's important for us as a body to figure out how we can figure out the best way for us to work across our differences, across our political beliefs, across all of those things. And I'm making a commitment to figure out how we can do that as a body, because everybody's paying attention to what we do and what we don't do and how we do whatever it is that we do, right? So with today's rules about what we should do, that should that, I just think that everybody's paying attention, and I think it's important for us to be really intentional about how we utilize this moment to help educate people about the way city government function and how we as a body function. President O'Malley, President O'Malley! You, since my moment when I stepped into the chamber, I've always seen you as someone who knows the rules, and you always are a stickler for them, and I so appreciate and value that. And I'm hoping and encouraging you, as you continue to preside over this council, is if there's any moment to educate people about what it is that we're doing and why we're doing it that way, seize that moment, because there are a lot of people who tune into this council meeting to learn and to see how government works. So, as you taught me when I first came in, I want you to utilize this platform that you have to drop some knowledge and help people understand the way we function. So I'm incredibly excited to see you in this role and to supporting you in this process and happy to call you my president. Okay, so congratulations on that front, okay? Really incredibly happy to see that. And to Counsel Baker. Yes, I'm looking directly at you, Counsel Baker. You know, you and I go way back.
I think this is a private phone call.
No, no, but I'm just going to say this to you, right? I just want you to know I'm going to lean into this as a city council at large, and despite whatever differences you and I have, we need to work through those things publicly and privately because we have work to do. And I'm going to put myself to the side, and I'm going to hold myself accountable. Frank, and I'm going to give you a call, but I want you to know I'm here for the work. I want, I just, I'm saying that out loud. I know I don't always show up in the best way, but I just want you all to know that I'm committed to working alongside each and every single one of you because there's a lot of work to do, and there are a lot of people who are counting on us to figure out how we can all work together to move this city forward. So I'm going to do my best to show up in my best self so I can hold myself accountable to the work. Counsel Edward, I apologize for however I've come up, and every single person in this council, but I am tired of us fighting against each other sometimes. And I think that we, now that we have one of our own as representing us on the Fifth Floor and who has been through this process here, I hope that we can all figure out how we can all work a little bit more collaboratively and together. And I'm making a commitment to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. I will gently remind all colleagues that you can't call out other counselors even during statements, but I appreciate the intent and the tone of your sentiment and certainly agree and look forward to the world becoming safer when we can be together, which I think is incredibly important. Chair now recognizes the district council from Dorchester. Counsel Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just speaking up today to recognize someone in my life. I've been with her for 35 years. Today's her birthday. It's my 34th birthday with her. I just want to say happy birthday to my wife. And this weekend is the product of our marriage. Benjamin and Maxine, the two people who I love more than anything in life. They are turning 15 this weekend, so it's a big birthday week at the Baker House. And thank you, thank you, Matt, for your stewardship of this party here today. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. On behalf of the entire council, happy birthday today. Happy anniversary, Maxine. Excuse me, happy anniversary to today and happy birthday to Benjamin and Maxine as well. So, thank you.
It's her birthday. It's not, it's her birthday, not our anniversary. I've been with her for 34 birthdays. We're only on, I think, 19 years of marriage, so we got a little bit of time. I'll let you know when the anniversary is.
Thank you. Seeing no further announcements, we will now move on to closing our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselora Arroyo, Carl Joseph Cretar Senior. For Counselor Braden, Mary C. Roach. For Counselor Campbell, Neil F. Hogan and Jawad Mohammed. For Counselor Edwards and the Chair, Willa Billy Behrens. Please, a moment of silence. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. And we are scheduled to meet again remotely on Wednesday, May, excuse me, Wednesday, March 31st at 12:00 noon sharp. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Nay, nay. The ayes have it. City council meeting hereby adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Everyone have a good day.